Yes. No, I kinda like going out at night and seeing the stars, so I think that should be something to reconsider when it comes to lights. Yeah, there's way too many on Front Street.
Okay.
The number of lights for, you know, yard or whatever is way too high on Front Street.
Okay. Okay, I'm... And again, I'm just here to apply for the funding of the project. If there's specific things that I'd like to see or not see with the project, that's obviously things that need more considered by the council. Are there any other historical or environmental impacts that the public feels we should be made aware of?
Do the trees have to be replaced?
Currently, the trees that are aligned along Chestnut Street are too big for, I guess, the area that it provides. What happens is the roots cause the sidewalks to crack and everything like that. And if the trees are not replaced, this is only gonna happen again in the future, and sidewalks are just going to continue to be replaced.
I'm sorry, what I meant is, do we have to have the expense of replacing the trees? You know, is that mandatory that the trees be replaced after you remove them?
Um...
No.
No, I guess not, but I-
No, it's not mandatory. It's something that we're talking about doing, Regina, that's one of those items, and that's a good point, that could be cut out if our budget comes in too high.
I think it's just important to think about, too, with a project of this magnitude, we don't... The city doesn't want to be paying for things again over the long term, so I think maybe removing trees that are unsuited for this project now and replacing them with smaller trees that are suited, I think, is maybe a bit of a long-term investment that probably the folks at the council, you know, down the road, so that they're not having to continue to do sidewalk reconstruction work is probably something to make consider. Any other... yes?
I just wanted to make you aware of the Albright Center, Community Arts Center-
Okay.
-project which is ongoing at 450 Chestnut Street, which would be adjacent to the project, and just to add that as, yes-
Okay, thank you.
-complimentary project that's going on. That's been approved through special program priority under DCED. Can we improve that more application still? That's great, thank you.
Um, any other comment? Um, I guess hearing none, I think we can adjourn the public hearings for the entitlement and competitive CDBG programs. I know Jamie had a couple things that she wanted to go over, so it's all right with the council. I'm going to turn the floor over to her. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Oh, can I also get your sign-in sheet? Thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple things. First, I would ask, after I have the public hearing, for the entitlement money, if you would go ahead and approve the resolution to apply for the 2014. That's not something I'm gonna have you sign tonight. We'll actually sign it when we get all the application documents together, but we do need a resolution to apply, so if you would pass that.
Do you want to add? The resolution, just the first part, I'm authorizing the submission of an application for the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development for fiscal year 2014 under the current block program. Motion to accept?
Go ahead.
Okay, you go first. Okay, you have a second. Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Kristing?
Yes.
Okay, the second thing we have on the agenda tonight for CDBG is the application for the Multi-Mobile Transportation Fund through ACT or to leave the funds that are being handled by the Commonwealth Financing Agency through DCED. It's an additional funding source for pedestrian, bike, safety kind of things. When it first came out, it was, the guidance was very much geared towards the cities with ports and transit rail and bus systems and all of that. However, I've been told by both the PecitaCo Transportation Program and some other planning people that we should go ahead and apply for it for Chestnut Street. It's the same application, basically, in the attachments that we've already done for everything else, so it's already ready. It has to be in June 20th, so I'm gonna get that pulled together here. I don't know when, but soon. But Terry has the resolution for that. If you would take action to approve a resolution to apply for two million dollars through the Multi-Mobile Transportation Fund for the Chestnut Street Reconstruction Project. I get the blue trees downstairs. Said they needed to be sung.
They're probably laying downstairs.
Is one that says we're at the city of Sunbury currently, the planning stages for the Chestnut Street?
That's what we previously passed for the Keystone.
It's basically just a resolution for the City of Sunbury to apply for two million dollars through the transportation or the Multi-Mobile Transportation Fund. It's sounding bad, so.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Kristing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Easter?
Okay, those are downstairs, so you can just sign those and get them over to me. I'm sure I'll be back here. The Keystone Communities Tax Credit Funds is on your agenda. Down below are the public nuisance properties that we're looking at declaring this evening. And I think most of those, if not all of them, would be eligible for demolitions through the Keystone Communities demolition funding that the county has provided to the city, and then there's also some tax credit funding. So there really isn't any action we have to take on that tonight, but next Monday, June 16th at 5:00 PM, I'll be meeting here with the mayor and councilman Reichter and whoever else on the council ones to attend to discuss, and members of the Redevelopment Authority, to discuss which properties we're going to target for demolition with those Keystone and tax credit funds. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. SRI update, Megan, here you are.
I'll say, um, thank you for our assistance from the city in getting the front ready. We had our second annual Wake the Lake this past Saturday. It was a great success. Both the bands were wonderful. Great weather, good energy, and so, we hope, we'll plan to do it again next year. Was there any comments anybody had?
It would've been better if the docks were put out.
I don't know.
I guess it would've been. With the gas and so.
Well, if you notice here, a couple weeks will be a lot of rain in the high water. Can't stall one day in the high water.
Is that the only reason they weren't put out?
It's a pretty good one.
Yes.
Be installed tomorrow morning. Stop down hell.
I'll be working tomorrow morning.
What kind of advertising did you do?
Uh, we had-
I didn't know anything about it until it was over.
Okay, none of us did. Okay, we had, I believe there's an article made there. I don't know if we had some PSAs on, um, PSAs, and also we were on the radio shows.
You think that's sufficient?
And we also, I mean, I know said that we could do more advertising. I'll definitely, we'll plan to do it, start earlier last year. We actually could get a clean start. We were hoping to find a partner, like a nonprofit partner, to work with us on it, but we were unable to find a partner, so we, I don't know, we did it this year. If anyone knows of anybody who wants to partner on any events, we are actually still, for nonprofits who might like to do it as a partial fundraiser or something like that.
Did you have more people issue than last year?
Yeah, definitely, definitely. And the weather was much.
Could beat the weather.
Could beat it. Business and Economic Development, we're waiting up for a response from Southern County IDA on a commitment to that business marketing plan. I'm not sure if, I think they give the proposal before the city council still in regard to that. For membership, we are offering complimentary annual memberships to new Sunbury businesses. Anyone who brings a new business into the downtown will be given complimentary membership. And we are in the process of establishing a member-to-member system program, which will start as of January 2015. Cheryl, in regard to Hill Neighborhood, Cheryl's working on wrapping up the Elm Street program. The Rain Guard was installed at Highland Avenue and Market Street, so please stop over and check that out. That was done two Saturdays ago. And the city, um, sorry, there's a property at 1180 Lime Street, which the Sunbury Community Hospital has leased to SRI and Hill Neighborhood, and they have sublet the upstairs of that to Sunbury Industries, so that will help support the income for the building. It will bring support out to the community, and it's a good company to have a presence here in the city. So it's a really good partnership. We're all involved. Promotions, we have a merchant discount part in progress. We're looking for businesses to participate in that in the downtown. We're promoting the citywide yard sale, which will be coming up on June 14th, this Saturday. Registrations to be on the yard sale map are still available until Wednesday. And the flower baskets, I think, or hopefully everybody can agree, they look amazing this year. They haven't died yet, and they're looking very, very good. The Albright Center Council, I wanted to bring up, we're completing our tax press credit process for 2014 and the detransfer. So that's where we're at right now, because I was wondering. Consultants will be meeting with the building committee very shortly, probably within the next month. And we're very excited to be releasing a number of presidencies as soon as the detransfer. So once that happens, we'll be thanking local church and many other partners. We're very excited to announce that we've had a really good year, and a lot of people have stepped up to, which is safe. With that, and our, your two applications are due this week, so I don't think something very well. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say, I know you've been working on a marketing plan for about a year. You wanna talk about that all done with the county, or are you gonna wait until we do get it, or?
No, we could do that now. Most of you, Eddie, that we're here several months ago, Amy Buehler talked to us about the marketing plan that SRI, Business and Economic Development Committee is working on with the county. They're, they met with Pat Mack from the county, and are very encouraged. One of the things that we talked about in that meeting was the fact that the city would commit some funding, probably in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars to that project, and like to get council to authorize a letter of support signed by the mayor and sent to the county, saying that the county does support this project. The purpose is to use, the committee has developed a marketing plan to attract new business, and not big box business, which is hard to do, but new entrepreneurial type of businesses into the city of Sunbury. Might bring five or 10 jobs, which would be really a boon for the city. City has some excellent internet infrastructure and so forth that really stands out and makes the city a good place for entrepreneurs to be. So the committee has just about finalized that, working with a local advertising company, and that will be pending approval by the county, then the city would also approve funds. So what we're asking for tonight is a letter of support from the city to the county about the project.
That a motion? I'll make that a motion.
Henry?
I have a question. Southern County, we might import employees, stay.
Do you have a department?
No, but I'm in part three, part of my department.
Kristing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Redevelopment Authority update. There was, I think, much of Redevelopment Authority, lots of things going on. I'm gonna just try to hit some of the highlights. We had a meeting last week. But 613 Catfish Avenue, is anybody in the audience here that's talking about these properties, 416 South 4th Street? We're about one week away from going after those two properties, 149 Church Street. We're doing inspection on now, if that passes, if that, if the blade is not remedied, that property will go on the next month's list. We should have an entire new list next July, or yeah, next July, in the July meeting. They reviewed all the plans. When you buy properties from the auction from the Redevelopment Authority, any property gets bought, you have to submit a plan within 30 days, what you're gonna do with that. So in other words, the Redevelopment Authority's not gonna let somebody take a single house and turn it into four apartments or anything like that, so you have to. And there was even four, six, seven of those turned in, six of those passed, and one was sent back, 152 Bainbridge Street, so we have to wait, hear back from them if they're going to agree with what the Redevelopment Authority wants. So that, you may, you may see that property up for sale again. We'll give the new owners the opportunity to get that straightened out first. We're going to talk about, I guess later on you're gonna give us some, or you wanna do that now? I guess we should do that now? Yeah, okay, let me get rid of 239 first, then I'll let you go over that. We're gonna add a couple to the list tonight.
Oh, either way.
But 239 Spruce Street is one that we've been, the Redevelopment Authority's been involved in for years. And the bottom line is, after, we had a meeting just to talk about this, and we stayed away from all properties that had people living in them, part that have doubles, for the simple reason that we didn't know what to do with the people. We haven't touched any property that anybody, every property we've addressed, tore down, sold, remodeled, whatever it was, has been done with the understanding that, you know, you know, we're gonna put the money up, or they're gonna put the money up. We weren't moving anybody's, any property, any people, any citizens out of their homes. So we pretty much got, got on the point, we didn't know what to do, and so we stayed away from them. Well, in the meantime, you know, it's no secret that we have a lawsuit against us, for whatever reason that may be. We hired outside attorneys away from us to take care of that lawsuit. In the meantime, we're moving forward with what we wanna do, and that's to improve the neighborhoods. So we're gonna continue to improve the neighborhoods, and 239 is gonna be one of those. So the Authority pretty much agreed that we're gonna pursue that property and take that property over, and we're gonna fix that up. There was a resolution here in front of us that we need to pass tonight. It pretty much is that it finds its best interest of the city of Sunbury to take necessary steps to move like the city of Sunbury, which we've been very successful for. We're going to, the Redevelopment Authority showed the Authority legal notices concerning removal of blighted condition of 239 Spruce Street. The Redevelopment Authority will take necessary steps to bring the property up to code standards. Those steps shown include, but not limited to, acquire, find possession of the property, removal of the blighted condition of the property, with the ultimate sale of the property like we've done with other sales. Polydoxymet property is to qualify buyer with acceptable redevelopment plan. Again, we've been doing it with everybody else, we're just adding this to us. The city council, Redevelopment Authority, city of Sunbury, recognize the steps taken by each organization with respect to 239 Spruce Street are summarized as follows. The city of Sunbury will defend the litigation filed by the Marshall family. And special counsel update, city council on all litigation matters. The city of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority will continue the process to remove the blight at the property located 239 Spruce Street. So we do wanna take that as a resolution tonight for the Redevelopment Authority to continue that and for the legal system to move forward to acquire that property. We've never acquired that property, and we're gonna do so now. So, somebody wanna make that form of motion, accept that? Form of motion. You second? I'll second.
Kristing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Kristing?
Yes.
Now, we have a few. Four we're gonna add to the public nuisance. There are 420, 422 Chestnut Street, 964 South Front Street, 822 South River Avenue, 216, 218 Spruce Street. Need a motion to accept that? I like that motion. You second? Second.
Shipman?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Kristing?
Yes.
All right, the only other thing that I have is there, there was two properties that didn't sell at the last couple auctions, so they'll be coming up in the near future, possibly some of these other properties, and that is 139, 141 Church Street and 414-416 North Second Street. And like I say, some of these other ones that didn't go through, they might be on that property, but that, that's not bad before the July meeting, so we'll-
No, I'm actually announcing it at least by maybe in the morning or shortly thereafter.
Yes. I do also wanna mention, there's a 65 North 8th Street. If everybody here lives on 8th Street, that's a really bad property. That's coming down, and we'll announce that at the next meeting. And for the people who live up in the 7th Street or 7th and Packer, that corner lot that we tore down that house and tried to turn it into a garden, and that didn't really work out very well. The Redevelopment Authority has agreed to pay estimated $2,200 to have landscapers mow it and clean up the property. They're gonna put some special stuff on that bank, up where the trees are, if you can picture that property. And we're going out for bids for sidewalks. There'll be sidewalks across the front and all the way up to the side. If you walk up Packer Street at all, it's, it really is a bad corner, and there are a lot of people that walk down and down with dogs, whatever it may be. So we're gonna put sidewalks outside, make it much safer to get up and down, and it'll make that, it'll make that corner really nice, it really will. It's just not big enough to put any kind of a home in it, but it's big enough, it's too big to, you know, the family garden thing just didn't work. It just doesn't look good, and it's, so this, what the Redevelopment Authority has agreed to do here is clear the plus for that area. I think everybody's gonna be happy when we get that done. And that, we're just gonna pretty much let that ground cover grow with professionals doing it, so it gets done where it should be, but that'll look nice on that bank side.
That 65 North 8th, I thought that was on the county.
It is, we're gonna go to that.
Okay.
That's the only one. Now, if you saw the paper, out of the 82 properties that there, that the county had up, there's only one of them in Sunbury. And that's pretty much because of what the Redevelopment Authority is doing. We're ahead of the games. And as you can see, we have one or two to rebit, but most of these properties are getting bid and fixed up, and plans are coming in, and we're keeping the code office busy, keeping Mike and we're busy over here. But that's another huge success. The Redevelopment Authority will keep you up to date.
We had, second of Spruce, that corner lot we had for years, the group, Terry, help me out, group business. Anyhow, it was that corner lot to take and put the flowers in there, and of course sidewalks and curving, and up there to beautify that corner. We'll be receiving a letter stating that in the future.
Okay. Any other questions of Redevelopment Authority?
Mayor, I just have a question or comment. I believe there's a property on 3rd Street that should be added to our list, but can you give the details, if you don't mind, or if you have any?
We're not sure, that might be, the guy might give that to the city.
Right.
We haven't heard back, and we're not gonna know that until Joe comes back to work tomorrow.
Okay, so you don't wanna do anything with it till then?
No.
Okay.
We've been working, he's been working with Joe on that, and we fight him on what we expect from him.
Okay.
Yes, 314 South 3rd.
Okay, good.
Good.
And what happened to 113 Chestnut? Why is that off the list?
It was actually declared a public nuisance at the April.
Oh, cool.
City House meetings. We're just ahead of the game on that one.
Very good, thank you.
What was that, 314 what, 4th?
South.
Third Street, South. Okay, uh, did you finish business? Do business. Had that road closure, I had that written here. Dale?
Yes, uh, my nap on August 5th. We're gonna go aside from Market Street below.
Easter? Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Kristing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Part-time hire, Rick.
Uh, yeah, I make the, make the motion that we hire, we did, uh, interviewed seven people for a code, for a part-time code job, and we condemned, we're gonna hire two people. One's a retired police officer, retired prison guard, and knows the area pretty well. The other one is in, pretty good with an IT, is an IT person, computer person. He knows the area very well, and they're both willing to do some weekend work, so I'd like to make a motion that we hire Norm Code, Norm Folt, I'm sorry, and Eric Long, as part-time police, or code officers, averaging between 10 and 15 hours a week.
You have a question?
Yes.
Yes, a motion, you second? Should I respond to that? How many, Rick, how many, how many code officers you gonna have now?
We're gonna have two full-time, two part-time.
Okay, so.
And the one that's gonna be basically doing mostly IT stuff until we get the system running and get it going, and then we'll be in the field also. He'll be doing both of it. His primary concern is we're setting up our program, interfacing between the police station, code office, treasurer's office. Everything will be updated, everything will be coded, everyone will be under a partial number, and everything in Sunbury property will be, be able to be brought up. They have to say the code office is bringing us a lot of names and all the tax.
That's good.
It will be, it, uh, well, I think it will be entailed there in this, take off of what we're gonna be discussing next week. Uh, we can, we will be able to keep track of inspections, re-inspections, citations, police citations, criminal citations. Everything will be there, when you can bring up, and you wanna find something out about a property, if you want to check the nuisance property or something, they have, will have the access. That has had better. And if, with the tax cost, you're not gonna need to know that.
I have, I have one question. Rick, do they have any construction experience, or no?
Construction experience?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know that we have any construction experience, but I don't know that anybody had a lot of construction experience when you started our program. They're learning, they will learn, and they're going to be working. They're going to be in the field primarily taking care of citations, and right now, we got work, grass, stuff like that. And they're going to trainings. We went to, I don't know, how many trainings? Four or five trainings we've had in, in, in the four or five months I've been there. We've been at different places with training, and they will be going to these trainings also.
All right, thank you.
Henry?
Yes.
Kristing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Easter? Reichter?
Yes.
Burger King Sanoco waiver, Rick.
Okay, uh, this is going to be, the stormwater waiver is gonna be for the whole block. All right, I'm gonna read that first. We are attaching a copy from closed plan covering the project. The plan shows the entire city block bounded by Ford Street, 5th Street, Oak Street, and Woodhawn Avenue. The entire area has been paved and has been an impervious surface for over 20 years, since the entire block is already impervious area, and the project will not change that in any way runoff will not increase at all. No undeveloped areas will be developed in this project. In Burger King's case, the existing buildings and new buildings are essentially identical in size. No roof areas, park areas remain the same. Clearly runoff from this development cannot increase, therefore, a waiver in accordance with Act Code 143.9 is justified. Uh, the reason we point out the whole block is impervious is because the areas traded between Sanoco, Burger King, and the city of Sunbury may still be negotiated, adjusted to a point that is no matter whose site is involved, every square foot is essentially the same off, same runoff goalie fissure, and therefore, the entire block will not vary in future runoffs. Uh, on that point, I'm gonna make a motion that we waive the stormwater runoff for the entire block of 4th and 5th, Oak, and Woodhawn.
I'll second.
I had a question, though. Didn't we just say that that was a problem in town? We have a problem with our stormwater system, so why would we give a waiver when we know the whole system needs redesign? Why would you give a waiver for an entire city block?
Because it's not changing in any way.
They're building new buildings. They're gonna excavate.
They're taking one building, or you can just building an exact same building.
But my point is, when they do that, is when you put new drains in. You don't wait until after all that's built and then come back in and dig it up and put your new drains in. You do it while it's under construction?
We had a meeting here in, I don't know, February, with everybody involved, municipal authority, gas company, people now, and everybody, everybody came in with the same thing that what they have planned is not a problem.
Okay.
Kristing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Were anything I could've started this month?
Uh, they're waiting, they're just waiting for this to get passed, they're ready to go. Now, Sanoco's not that way. And as far as the land development, basically the same thing as Florida, Burger King does. They're building, they're building exactly the same size as they're tearing down and just moving it a certain speed, so there's not gonna be any, any, uh, what's it say, replacement, replacement building, and the use will remain the same. I would like to cite the council, too. The council has determined that the land plan is not required because existing building is being replaced by replacement building, and the same use will, the use will remain the same. So I'd like to make a motion that we waive the land development plan for Burger King. Sanoco has not submitted anything yet, so we don't know what they're going to.
Ister? Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Kristing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Hey, Rick?
Yes. Thank you.
Use of riverfront?
Yes, the neighbors from. This is coming Saturday, June 14th. I'd like to have a commercial use of riverfront. And, uh, also the open container waiver. Water's getting better down there this Saturday. Turning the proper insurance papers, force of proper application, and not starting to build a taxi.
This is the same thing we do with everybody else that uses it, correct?
Yes.
Uh, agreement city leases the James as a wedding central venue. Like I said, I'm sure most of you have been down along the river for something. Is there any motion? Do you have a motion? Everybody?
I'll make that motion.
You second?
Shipman?
Yes.
Ister?
Oh, wait.
Reichter? Henry? Kristing?
Yes.
Now, we have one specific, we have the open container law, which in short has been provided, or $82 million. The motion, accept that? Second?
I'll second it.
Ister? Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Kristing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Who are we paying voices, John?
Yes. We have $33,521.27 sets, uh, regular dipper, and $1,989.20 fuel. We'll prove those.
Second?